Twenty twenty four. I will call the meeting to order. Francisco, do we have any sunshine announcement?
Uh, yes. In accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Tuesday, July twenty third. We have the notices to be marked. This is B one for the record.
Okay. Can I, can I have a roll call?
Yes. So I see Commissioners Zablaki.
Here.
Commissioner Shadid.
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Barron.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
And Vice Chair Arroyo.
Here.
We have a total of six Commissioners tonight.
Can we please stand for the, salute to the flag?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Iris, can you please swear in staff?
Yes. Did you swear that the testimony and comments were provided this evening would be true to the whole truth?
Yes. Uh, Francisco Espinoza.
Okay. Francisco, do you have any correspondence or adjournments that you'd like to share?
Yes. So item or number six in adjournments, case Z twenty dash zero four three. The address is two oh one Newark Ave. They have requested to carry to the August eighth regular meeting with preservation of notice, and all other items on the agenda will be moving forward tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'd just like to make an announcement, just to let everybody know, we have only six board members. So those that are anticipating to be heard with seven, we may have to do that another time. If we're in the middle of a case and we will hear presentations and comments, however, we won't take any new cases after ten o'clock. Okay. Okay, with that said, we have all business. It's, um, let me look, okay. The old business is seven case Z twenty-two, zero, seven, nine, one forty-six dash one fifty-two Glenwood Avenue. The attorney is just, uh, Stephen Joseph.
Good evening, Stephen Joseph.
Good evening.
Castano Quigley Traumi for the applicant. So this was carried from the last meeting with preservation of notices. We did conclude direct testimony at the last hearing. I do see some different faces here tonight, so I would just want to confirm that the new commissioners here have watched the video or listened to the audio recording. Wonderful, thank you. Yes.
Get the mic. Oh, okay. Okay, go.
Okay, okay. We postponed this last time when we carried it because there were only six commissioners. Again, there's only six, so you're going forward tonight to completion.
Yes, yeah, and we'd like to move forward tonight.
Great, okay, great.
All right, so I believe we concluded direct testimony, I believe next is public comment.
Yes. So is there anyone from the public who wanted to comment? You can just come forward and comment.
I do. Sure, my name is Eric Blair Carter, Carter, C A R T E R. One five nine Glenwood Avenue, Jersey City, New Jersey, zero seven three zero six. That was hard. So I'm gonna read a statement from the McGinley Square Community Board, of which I am a member. Our president couldn't be here tonight because it is July and people are on vacation, so I'd like to read the statement that she did. Hello Commissioners, I'm from McGinley Square Community Board. The new owner of one forty-six introduced himself to the community not by meeting with us, but by getting busted for misrepresenting permits and illegal complete renovations in May, when they only had a permit for sheet rock. They disrespected due, due process, the zoning board, the community, and the city laws. But let's talk about the plans. Community, community appreciates adaptive reuse plans for historically significant one four six Glenwood, and the commitment to maintaining the existing structure size. Community spoke in support of the cousin project at one oh four Glenwood on February eighth. We look forward to welcoming hundreds of new neighbors here. We do respectfully request a few reasonable conditions. Trees. We want the four thirty-foot tall matriarch trees kept in their current home. The historic architecture naturally includes a courtyard of equal historic lush, mature, stormwater mitigating magnificent make, matriarch trees. Four are especially significant, one is a cherry, and three are dogwoods. They are not red maple and plum, as the applicant believes. We know this because we live here. In March, the community and councilwoman were told these trees would remain in place. Two weeks ago, zoning was told that the trees will not remain and will be relocated. Carolyn claimed the owner will reinvigorate the landscape. Destroying established trees can hardly be considered reinvigorating a sustainable, or sustainable. Amanda Diamond, substantial, sustainability director, confirmed that these trees, while thriving, do not stand much of a chance, chance if relocated. Also, five new sidewalk trees were planted in front of one forty-six last fall. Please require the owner to keep and carefully work around those trees, and to plant the required five new trees elsewhere on the block, and ensure the courtyard remains open to the public.
One minute ago.
Okay. Two, community from three groups, the W S C A, the L P N N A, and the M S C B met and requested a superintendent to live on them for maintenance, key fob access installed in elevators and hallways for safety, curb cuts included for delivery vehicles, uh, four, some condos, not just apartments, to create diversity of housing and long-term neighbors, five, only low-down lighting on the building for facade. Lastly, parking, we would like off-site parking added. They were treating the university zone property as if it was a residential zoning, which comes along with parking requirements. As Tanya Marion wrote on three seventeen, and I quote, "In instances where the buildings exist, on, onsite parking isn't practical. An off-site area for parking is considered a reasonable mitigation on use variance. If you cannot figure out how to accommodate parking off-site, the product will be supported, will not be supported by the planning department." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker? Please come up. You have three minutes, okay?
Yes, I do. My name is Dermot Ronan, last name is R O N A N. One five nine Glenwood Avenue. Thank you. Commissioners, I just want to highlight the fact that the buildings as dorms did not have tremendous use of vehicles. Obviously, there were students going to school there. Changing the zoning to a, a dwelling will necessitate, I believe, parking. There is no parking on the block, irrespective of the fact that there's more development coming online on the block. One oh four is already online. Eight fifty West Side Avenue on the corner of, of West Side and Glenwood is also having work done on it to be repurposed into dwellings, in addition to other dorms on the block that are as yet unknown. So I feel strongly that we need a parking solution. There are lots of new developments online around West Side Avenue, and in general, in the West Side and McGinley Square neighborhoods. Most of those buildings are supplying some level of parking to those residents, and I think the same should be true here. So I, I stress again the need for parking, and I do also stress and echo the comments that were made regarding trees. We don't have enough trees across all of Jersey City. Pulling up five mature trees is, is vandalism, in my opinion, and I don't think we should stand for that. We need every tree we have in this city to stay, and we need a lot more coming online, which forestry are doing a nice job on, I have to say. So thank you for, for my comments, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do. Charlene Burke, B U R K E. Fifty-six Duncan Avenue. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm the president of the West Side Community Alliance, of which this neighborhood is a part of. And one of the things I concur with those who live on the block have, since I have been part of this process going forward, since Saint Peters had sold these properties, is that, excuse me, they maintain a lot of parking lots. And we had asked the developers who previously owned this property if in fact there could be some negotiation with Saint Peters about parking solutions, so that it gives relief to the block, given it's a small block, and like I live on Duncan majority of apartment buildings, it can, it becomes very difficult to park. So parking is a big, big, big issue for this block, and this is a developer that can in fact negotiate with Saint Peters for some solution there. I agree, even with, I know that that's one of the variances they're asking, relief from the parking. Maybe they can expand their affordable housing, which they've actually approved or, or stating they will do five. Well, let them do five more workforce housing, people who work in Jersey City, who may not need a car. So five more units that might be workforce housing could at least give some relief to, I don't think that's a big number to ask. That would mean ten units in total. That would be a wonderful relief solution, at least the neighborhood would think you were working with them. And I really do believe that, yes, this developer can give many more trees to Glenwood Avenue. In keeping those mature trees, that's important, because again, Jersey City is so low in its canopy, and we keep losing more with all of the zoning changes you have seen. ADUs are wiping out backyards. The developers are building bigger houses. Any of those mature trees that used to be in the backyards are gone, and they are the ones that really do mitigate the air and absorb the most amount of water. So here we are saying we're a sustainable city, and yet we do quite the opposite. So if you can encourage them to keep those, as well as add more, as well as seek parking solutions, and offering five workforce housing, that would be a great solution overall, thank you.
You're welcome.
I do. John Hanusak, H A N U S S A K. Twenty-four Highland Avenue. Just some additional comments on the parking. There's a, a large mindset with some transportation-minded folks, where they believe that we don't need as many cars as we used to. But I, I gotta say, with fifty-three units, sure, are fifty-three units each can have cars? Probably not, but even if you put a conservative number at half, you're looking at somewhere between twenty and thirty cars, in my opinion, minimum, that you're adding to the neighborhood with this project. So again, parking solutions need to be part of discussion here, or else this is gonna be incredibly detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. We asked if I could make a statement of my own.
You can.
Because I read, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanna say that before this developer took over the project, we worked very closely with the previous developer on trying to do things so that we could all be neighborly, and you know, we offered some things that we wanted, and they told us some things that we were doing, which we agreed with. What I'd like to request is that for a condition for changing the zoning is that they continue to work with the community. What's happened is, is this new developer has taken over the project, and the only way that we knew that there was somebody new is when the illegal work was going on. They still have not spoken to anybody in our community organization. I spent twenty years downtown. We had a house on Montgomery between Grove and Barrow, and I was part of the Van Vors Park Association, where I learned how to work with developers, how to give them some of the things they need, and as a result, they would support the community. That's all we ask for, to get treated the same way that the neighborhoods downtown get treated. And if they could come to us, and let's talk about what we can do. We've talked about trees, you know, could we do a playground? What else can we do to work in partnership so that they are good neighbors and we in turn continue to be good neighbors to them? I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mister Joseph, do you wanna respond to any of that? Could you just get to the trees in the courtyard?
Yeah, so.
Did your presentation say that if you keep those trees, you'd have to close off the street in order to construct? Did I remember that correctly?
That's correct, so it was our testimony at the last hearing that the reason why the trees are being removed is to use it as a staging area. I, I believe we also said we'll do whatever the board wants. If the board prefers the trees remain, we're happy to do that. The applicant would agree to that as a condition, but the staging area would then need to be on the street.
Yeah, I mean, that's up to, let's see what staff has to say about that. Now, that's number one, what about number two, the parking? How could the prior developer work out something with Saint Peters and you can't?
The prior developer did not work out something with Saint Peters. So, yeah, look, this application's been carried many, many, many times. It was at the request of the community, at the request of the councilwoman, and sometimes because there wasn't a full board of Commissioners. We've had many meetings. The prior applicant, and this applicant has, has agreed to do many, many things, including the, the low-facing lights. That's something we brought up in our testimony last time. The bird-shaped glass, that's something we brought up in our testimony last time. Parking is, is one, not possible because the building has been deemed historically significant. But it's also not required under, under any circumstance because of the affordable housing units. This is a university zone, but any other residential zone in the city would permit exactly this development. If this was an R one zone with this historic building here, we can, we can do exactly this density. I also wanna point out, we're not requesting a variance for parking. That was something that was brought up. It's, we're not requesting a variance for parking.
Well, I can understand how parking would be beneficial to the developer. You know, whether it's gonna be condos or whether it's gonna be rentals, if you're gonna, you know, if you can have parking for the, for the residents, that would be great for the residents.
They could also charge for the parking. It would be wonderful.
And, and also, Ms. Burke had a good suggestion, how about a couple of apartments there as workforce?
I, I wouldn't be comfortable recommending my client do that. You know, the city has an Affordable Housing Administration now. We worked closely with them to agree to the number and type of units, and I wouldn't wanna change that.
Sounded good, okay.
So I, I don't know if any of the Commissioners wanna ask questions of Mister Joseph's experts?
Yeah, we do have our architect and our planner back this evening.
Yeah, everybody is here, I think so. Anybody have questions?
Any comments, questions? No?
No.
No, my comment would be, if you're gonna go back to the developer and ask him about parking, or try to solve that issue somehow, do you want us, why do you want us to vote today? Can we wait until he asks the developer?
Yeah, you gotta go into the mic.
What I'm saying is that you said that you're gonna go back to, to the developer to ask him about the parking. Are you gonna do something about the parking? Is this gonna happen today, or?
We, so I, I didn't say I was going back to the developer to talk about the parking. When I says the parking is not possible, it's something that, that myself and our design team, which has been the same through the prior owner, and this owner has tried to do numerous times, and it's.
So there is no way we can solve the parking issue?
No, not, not without demolishing the building.
Yeah, it's historical. Do we have any more?
Maybe we should hear from staff, maybe staff has some comments that would help us along.
Okay, so I don't, I do wanna be brief. I don't wanna repeat too much of what Ms. Worstel said. Staff does agree with her testimony that was taken at the previous meeting. However, I just wanna refresh everyone's mind. Give me a second to see if my staff report comes up on the screen, if, and it doesn't. All right, well, I have it in paper form. Let me just do that. All right. So I do wanna remind everyone, the variances that the applicant is requesting is a D one use variance, as well as two C variances. One is for parking and one is for minimum buffer. Ms. Worstel did a wonderful job explaining that to the board. However, I do wanna just hit a few points. It is the opinion of the staff that this is, this proposal advances the following purposes of zoning per the M L U L. B, to secure safety from flood or fire or panic. So the applicant is proposing new landscaping, as well as, which is in the rear, as well as in the front yard, including five new street trees where none, no trees exist today. In addition, the applicant is installing, excuse me, the applicant is installing a green roof that covers twenty percent of the roof. Renovation of the existing structure will bring it to current fire code standards, as well as it promotes item E, which is to promote establish, an establishment of appropriate population densities. The subject property no longer serves the university. The adaptive reuse of the property as a multifamily dwelling is consistent with the uses permitted in R three, which is the zone right, well, it's adjacent to this lot. The proposed unit count is appropriate as well for the oversized nature of the lot. There are multiple buildings that are multifamily use, and they're consistent with the character and scale of the surrounding context. And lastly, it promotes item J, to conserve historic sites. The applicant is proposing an element of historic preservation and will continue to work with city planning, as well as historic, by adaptively reusing the exterior, or sorry, the existing structure, which was formerly a dormitory. The essence of the use is to house people. That will not change with the proposed project. Most of the surrounding block is zoned as university due to Saint Peters being a major anchor in the neighborhood. The area does contain large garden and mixed, mid-rise apartments with some one and two-family homes towards the West Side Avenue area. The applicant will not be providing parking. The current structure will be rehabilitated and cannot be demolished or significantly altered due to its architectural significance in the neighborhood and city. Thus, there is no way the applicant will be able to accommodate for the parking. The applicant has provided bicycle parking at the rear of the building for residents. There, additionally, the property is within a mile of the Journal Square Transportation Center, with two bus lines on West Side Avenue and J F K, providing transit service to the Journal Square and other locations. In addition, as per chapter one eighty-seven, inclusionary zoning section five, additionally, excuse me, additional standards for affordable housing subsection B, it states, "A developer subject to the affordable housing set aside shall be afforded an exemption from any applicable minimum parking standards for the purpose of aiding in the construction of affordable housing units in which this developer is providing. In staff's opinion, the existing building can handle the proposed amount of intensity on the existing lot. Therefore, staff sees no substantial impairment of the intent of the nearby zone and master plan, should the variances be granted." And with that said, staff does recommend approval, with conditions outlined in my staff report, as well as, not sure if you were given, or if you read through Maggie's memo for historic?
Yes, I did.
I also did wanna say two things, or two more points. I did provide in my staff memo, there's a nineteen thirty-eight, which I wish I could show you guys, but it's not working. There was, I did some research, in nineteen thirty-eight, there were two tax cars that I provided, and these buildings each provided twenty-five units in nineteen thirty-eight. So the applicant is meeting to what it was previously. In this case, they're providing fifty-three units, and in nineteen thirty-eight, the buildings provided a total of fifty units.
Okay. Thank you, Francisco. Okay, with that said.
So first, Mister Joseph, you had some of the, you saw these?
Carl has a question.
I was just gonna say, so are we making a condition to keep the trees there?
That is up to the board's discretion.
Okay, so are we, that has to be put in tonight if we're doing it, so.
Yeah, but I mean, if they put the tree, if they leave the trees, and that means their machinery and everything else has to go.
Well, this one, that's why I'm asking. We have to like say one way or another. It's a condition or it's not a condition? I mean, he said they could do it, but they would have to close the street down to do it, so I guess it's just weighing what the community wants, do they want the trees at the expense of the construction period? I mean, that's what it comes down to.
It's some of both, so the street would have to be shut down temporarily to get stuff in there, but it would be blocking off areas that are normally used as parking. The reason why we suggested the courtyard for staging is because parking is so important in the area. Again, the applicant will do whatever the board would like. I could have the architect provide some testimony on that. Dennis, if you could just give the board some clarity based on your past experience on what shutting down the street would look like, what construction staging looks like, and about how long that would take for, for a rehab project?
Well. Yes, thank you. It was our opinion that the courtyard would have best served the community if we relocate the trees, and best serve the community if all the staging was done in the courtyard. That just basically takes up one spot to get in and out of the courtyard. And between site fence and, in, in the staging area, have minimal, the construction process have minimal impact on, on the community. By leaving the trees, not, I mean, you know, you have to protect them, so now you have to form an area around the trees, so no, you know, because there's still going to be work in and out of the courtyard, and you can't avoid using the courtyard for some kind of a staging. So all the trees will have to be protected with some sort of barrier, and it's, you know, so it, it's not that they can't, they can remain. So now we're talking about the, all the work being done on the streets. So I'm probably at least four, at any given time, maybe four spots will be lost. Dumpsters have to be put out on the street. So it, it just becomes problematic for the community. I mean, we see what's going on in the city, there's so much development. I mean, I, I think I was trying to cross town today where at least four or five roads that were closed, just trying to, you know, so these are the types of things that happen, and, and we thought that it would be best that we could.
So Dennis, four or five spaces on the street, that's about approximately the area?
Almost, almost a hundred feet.
How many trees?
I, probably this, this renovation is probably six to eight months.
How many trees?
It's not gonna take up, it's not gonna take up that many spots the entire time, but, you know, at any given time, someone's gonna have to have, post the signs and take up those spots and, and, and dumps. And then the majority of the work is gonna, the entire building has to be re-sheetrocked, so you have to load the building with sheet rock. Every, everything's getting gutted, it's gonna be, every subcontractor, electricians, they're gonna need a place. Even, even parking for, you know, for all your subs, you know, courtyard could, could also serve as parking for, for, you know, for constructions personnel as well. So if, if, you know, but like, well, like Mister Joseph said, if the board feels it necessary, I honestly, I believe those trees can be replanted elsewhere in the community, and I believe that the landscaping design that we came up with will, you know, make a, a, a much interesting presentation into this, into this building, so.
So you intend to remove those trees and put them somewhere else?
Yeah, that was our testimony.
You can't put them back where they belong?
At the right time of the year, and you, and you, you know, use a, a, a proper landscape experts. They can, they can, they can pull those trees and plant them elsewhere in the, in the community. That's what we testified last time. But, you know, the client did say he would, you know, I think, and if the board and the community feels that it's really, really important to leave the trees, we would leave the trees and try to work around them.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay. Any more comments, questions? Carl?
So, it sounds like you wanna try to, if you can, save the trees if you possibly could. The question is, how do we, what if they try and then they can't? Like, are they, is that my point, like, where to? It's almost like I wanna make, I would like to see it as a condition, but if it becomes too crazy even for the community while they're doing the construction, they might wanna change that, that game plan, so. It's almost like we're asking for a good faith effort, really, to try and save the trees, is what it sounds like, without putting it in like.
We could have a condition and, and counsel, maybe this would work, we could say that that. We could say that that particular condition could be revised at staff's recommendation instead of coming back to the board.
I mean, can you, once you start working on it, can you put the trees, not the trees you're taking out, but maybe new trees or something in the place, in place?
Yeah, no, we had a landscaping plan, so our...
Oh, you do?
The courtyard, I thought, was quite beautiful design, but, yeah, we're just talking about the existing trees that are there now, what to do with them.
Okay. Okay.
Well, what kind of condition do you want? That they work with, you work with staff?
Uh, yeah.
Sounds like a real burden. It sounds like it's not going to work, you know.
Dennis testified that it is a burden, but, you know, we're happy, we're happy to do that if that's, you know, what the community wants and what the board wants.
Well, just out of curiosity, how many workers would be using parking spaces on the street that would otherwise be able to park in the courtyard?
I'm sorry?
How many parking spaces would the workers be using on the street versus how many would be able to use the courtyard?
Well, we did a quick little plan study. We can get, if we had to try to get parking into that courtyard somehow, it would be, again, keeping the trees makes it that much more difficult, because the trees aren't evenly placed, they're kind of scattered around.
If the trees were not there...
Probably eight to 10 spots within the courtyard can be parked.
For the workers, right.
And it's, they wouldn't be a normal parking lot, you know, they would be parking behind each other.
No, I understand that.
Tandems, you know, because... Can I mention something?
I wish I can see that again.
Sure. To say...
We're going to work with first.
Yeah.
Well, Commissioner, what do you think?
Yeah?
Okay, there was another two requests, one about the playground and one about increasing the number of affordable housing.
So the affordable housing, I think I responded to, I said that the city has this Affordable Housing Administration, and we worked with them in detail on the number of units and the level of affordability and the size of the units.
Yeah, we're talking about increasing it, can you do that?
I wouldn't recommend my client do that at this point because of the work we did already with affordable housing.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds like something that would have to be done at the council level, too. It's something to amend that ordinance that deals with affordable housing.
And I believe we do have two three-bedroom affordable units in this development, which is beyond the requirement.
Okay. So, no more questions?
Back to the trees? I don't, I want to help, I mean, I like it, it just sounds like it's going to be a major inconvenience. I mean, maybe there's a few trees that could be moved and others stay. I mean, do you want to try it, but we just can't hold you again, you know, hold it against you and just try and see what happens? I don't know what...
Perhaps we should work with staff on that.
Yeah. I'll tell you, I have, I have one building that's going up on my block, and you have the PSC, you have the construction, you have everything in there. I mean, they even park in my, front of my parking space. So that's a lot of trucks for just one house, and it's a little house. This one is really a big project, and I assume it's going to take a lot of space in the street, so, I don't know, you have to kind of consider whether you want your convenience or you want the trees, you know?
So maybe we make a condition that when we get to this, when you get to construction phase, you go back to staff and advise staff whether you can remove those trees or not, construction-wise.
Absolutely.
Because it sounds to me, it sounds like such a burden not to remove them.
Yeah.
You know, it sounds like you're going to be having drywall all up and down Glenwood.
A lot of, a lot of trees, a lot of trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're going to have the street closed all the time, because I know I have that right now, and it's just two families.
Okay, so... So, with that said?
Can we have a motion?
I was just going to add that I think it would make sense for the applicant to work with staff as well as the forester to see if the trees have any viability at that point. We could cross that bridge when we get there, so that condition probably would make sense.
And that's acceptable.
All right. So with that said, can I have a motion?
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve KZ 22-7, excuse me, -079, as presented to the board this evening with conditions.
Great.
Second.
Second.
On a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Zablucki?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
No.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Aruyo?
Yes.
Motion carries, five in favor, one opposed.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Yes, good evening and good luck.
Okay. Okay, so our next case, a new business. The next case, it's Z...
I voted no for the next one.
Z 2024-0037, 3443, John F. Kennedy Boulevard. Attorney is Mr. Ronald "Holly" John Saljin. Okay, all right. Yes. Can't hear you.
You have to speak into the microphone.
Hello? Is that all right?
Yeah, use the other one.
No, because it's the same.
Yeah.
Okay, that's better now, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Saljin, it's like your days at the disco, you just, remember those days?
Very, very foggy memory of those days.
Mr. Saljin, before you start, this is a notice case, and Iris, I handed you the notice, the affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication, and we'll mark it A1 for this application.
Okay.
This is a site plan amendment case only. There are no variances that are being requested. The building at this location, 3443 Kennedy Boulevard, was approved back in 2018. It's a six-story building, 60 units and 30 parking spaces. During the course of construction, there were some deviations that the builder did, and when, I don't know if it was, I think Tanya came out and inspected the building and suggested that we come back here to get a site plan amendment. So the application is completely clean and we would get our permanent CO. Right now, we have a temporary CO. So I have one witness, Mr. Garber, I'm sure you're very familiar with him. He's going to take you through whatever changes that were made and how we're going to deal with it.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
So Mr. Garber's been here many times. We recognize his expertise and we assume his licenses in order, so...
Yes, it is.
Great.
I do, thank you. I'm just going to have a projection issue here, we're going to try this.
What are we, what are we doing with the, with the, with you, conversation? Did anything happen yet? Or we talk about it at the break?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to talk to you about it first. Thank you so much for everything that we have to, have to charge us.
Don't worry about that, what are we going to do?
I feel they are going something behind my back, so, because he asked me for a dinner meeting or something, I had for two people talk with, two board members asked me for a dinner meeting, and I didn't even confirm it. So I...
Okay, great. So, thank you, members of the board, for hearing this. Hopefully, this will be a relatively easy case. It ends up being a very nice building that was built. And ultimately, Mr. Saljin talked a little bit about the history here. This was a zoning board application back in 2017, 2018, 2019, we started construction, COVID intervened, and because of that, there were some changes in the field, some of them we were aware of, admittedly, and some of them we weren't, and we, you know, tried to work with the contractor. So what you see here is a rendering of the building, which was approved by the zoning board, and what you see on the right is the finished building. And so materials are consistent, the application of materials is more or less consistent, but you see that there's some differences in the way that it got applied, and I would actually argue that it's a little bit more handsome the way, there's more order to it, in my opinion, the way it is. And I will say, you know, as an architect, when we're proposing multiple materials on a building facade, it's quite easy to do that in design, but it's sometimes more difficult to do that in execution. And I would say that the changes that occurred here in no way affect negatively the resolution and I think make the building a little bit of a better building. And so I have another couple of views here, you can see it here, there's some great drone photos of the building, and you can see it in context where it is relatively in scale with some of the buildings around it. And now to go into some of the different views that we are changed. So I'm going to take you through the approved plans and the as-built conditions or proposed plans. And again, there's no change in number of parking, et cetera. There's a couple of doors that have been added on the ground floor, there's been a reconfiguration, as you see here, of the trash room, where instead of bringing the trash directly through the lobby, the trash is accessed through the garage, and there is a way to come out through the lobby. And you can see here, there's two additional egress doors that were decided to be put in on the corners, I've circled them in red, that were not in the original plan. The floor plans are more or less consistent, and you can see here, I won't go through these, but it's a six-story building, and the floor plans do change at the top floor, where you can see there was a green roof proposed in the approved, let me take a, oh, okay, there's a green roof proposed in the approved board drawings, and you can see that on the left. That green roof ultimately wasn't built, that was not something we were aware of, but I do think that there, when this project was actually designed, we could have onsite collection, like, there's basically a cistern under the building, so the green roofs aren't as performative as they need to be today. So we do have onsite collection, so I'm not so worried about a decrease of what ends up being about 1,000 square feet of green roof. We did, however, try to add as much green roof to the roof, once we were talking with staff about this. And what we do have here is a net decrease of about, it's about 800 square feet, it goes from 5255 that was approved to about 4546 that was built. So we still would argue that there's a fair amount of green roof for a building of this size. And then if you see the before and after elevations, admittedly, these were some changes we made architecturally during construction. We've just kind of reimagined the location of some of the window boxes and the panels. These are a combination of fiber cement brick, as well as the light gray is ACM panel, it's metal panel. And, you know, even proportionately, the amount of these materials are about the same, they've just been kind of reordered, and we think that that makes the building a little more handsome. And you see that here on the rear also. I am happy to say that there's ACM panel and brick on the rear, not as much stucco, we usually see stucco on the rear of these buildings, so it is a little bit more of a higher quality material on some of the faces of the building that do not front a right-of-way. You see that in the side elevations here. And then I thought I'd finish with just a couple of images. You know, the building is occupied, the building, people are very happy with it, and we are too. This is a five-foot fence, this was one of the questions that Mr. Beasley had, the height of the fence that was installed, it's five feet, you can see it here, and I think I'll just end with that image. So thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you, Mr. Garber. I don't have any other witnesses.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have any comments from the public? No comment? Do we have comments from the board?
So, good evening. I just, my only question is, are the top units duplex?
No.
Okay.
They're not, they're, if, Mr. Allen, you may have even been on the board, I can't remember actually when we actually got this approved, maybe, maybe not, but, so, the way that this is designed and the way that we, let me go to actually one of these images, the way that we sort of argued for a contextual relationship in this building is if you look and you blur your eyes, we have some taller multifamilies, we also have some one and two-family houses, so this is a very large frontage, it's about, the site is about almost 18,000 square feet, we have a wide frontage on JFK, and so what we did was we sought to break up that frontage with mass and color, but you can see also that we stepped from a six to a five to a six to a five to a six to a five, right? And so where the changes were made is some of those areas on the roofs of the five stories, that was designed to be green roof, and I think as the builder was building them, he said to himself, well, there's some really great views up here. So those green roof areas actually became public terraces that are, you know, accessible from the hallway, but there are single-floor units on every floor.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have comments from the staff?
I don't have too many comments, I just ask that the applicant agrees to the conditions within the original approvals, Z18-80, as well as the conditions enumerated in staff memo dated July 22, 2024. Other than that, staff recommends approval.
Okay, great, thank you.
I acknowledge your seat of the July 22 planning memo, and my client has agreed to be responsible to comply with the conditions of approval of this board tonight and the 2018 resolution.
Okay, thank you so much. May I have a, excuse me, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second?
On a motion to approve with previous conditions and the condition outlined in the staff report, Commissioner Zablucki?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Aruyo?
Yes.
Motion carries, all in favor.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, we have the case Z 22-069, 59 Montrose. Attorney is, again, oh.
They're going to see our team a bit tonight.
It's you again, okay.
Again, Mr. Saljin, we have your notices.
Right.
Your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication, so we're going to mark that as A1, Iris, yeah.
Okay. This application is for 59 Montrose Avenue. It's a mixed-use residential and commercial building that presently exists on the corner of Montrose and, what's the cross street?
Manhattan.
Manhattan, right. And from what I understand, I didn't attend the neighborhood meetings, but there were at least two neighborhood meetings, and we obtained a lot of input from the neighborhood. And based upon that input, we did make some changes. There was some issue about the historical significance of the building, that too was addressed by the architect. So we're here tonight seeking a number of variances, and we have two witnesses, Mr. Garber, and we have our professional planner, who's with us as well. So I'd like to call Mr. Garber as the first witness again.
Okay.
Very good, thank you very much. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Board, thank you very much. This project has also been, all the projects you're seeing tonight, actually, have been with us for some time, and we've been working on this project on and off since, I think, the beginning of 2020. It is a very, in my opinion, handsome building, historically significant, right at the corner of Montrose and Manhattan. The address is 59... The address is 59 Montrose, but what you'll see in my slides is it's really three buildings that have kind of been joined together through the years. We were very happy to work with the HPO, Maggie O'Neill in this case. We understood that this was a significant building and something that we really thought about restoring as part of proposing an addition on it. Ultimately, we are proposing five dwelling units, two commercial units, right? So we do need some relief for that. But I will tell you that in working with the community, we had originally thought that there would be six residential units, one commercial, and went to one of the community meetings, and the community asked for a second commercial space, thinking that it was really needed. After speaking with Planning Staff, Francisco worked with us on this. It was welcomed, and so it was something that we developed. Now, in terms of the significance of the building, it really is, it's a little beat-up, admittedly, right? But it has some, it has some good bones. And interestingly, you know, so one of the community members who was very vocal is Paul Amatuzzo, who you know is a longstanding commissioner on the historic board, and Paul worked with us in uncovering some of the history of this building. And so, for instance, under the white that you see here is actually a tin storefront, right, of the period, right? And so while we may not be able to completely restore that tin, we can replace it in kind, right? So we've done some forensics in and around the building. And I am a fan, sometimes people don't like yellow buildings. I think in this case, it's very appropriate for this building. And you see that it has some fairly modern kind of styling to it, even though it's an older building. And it is very much ordered so that you can tell what the three stories look like, and you see that as it continues around the side. All of the blue and white will be replaced, and you'll see that in our drawings. So this is the front building, Building One. Building Two also needs some love. Is a, a little bit of a beat-up kind of brick front that also has some historic, historically significant storefronts on it. So this was also commercial, right? This will be the building lobby, right? We're going to split a commercial, and then a commercial in the building portion that you're about to see, and have a lobby here. Now, what this looks like is this. And so what we're trying to do is, or what we're proposing, excuse me, is that we're adding, in effect, 1.5 stories, right? So we're maintaining proud, that yellow, stucco element that will be restored. New windows, obviously, double glazed and so forth. Building in addition, let's see if I can get my mouse up here, back here, that will match through coloration what's below it, and that's going to be restored brick. And then we have a little bit more of a contemporary setback fourth floor. And again, and, oh, and then I haven't talked about this piece yet, which I am looking forward to speaking about. This is a single-story garage. We were going to put a live-work unit in there. Thought that that might be appropriate. It's on Manhattan Avenue, going down the hill to Tunnelley. But the community came and said, you know, we just need a coffee shop. We need something like this, basic service, and we think that this is a perfect location for it. And after talking with the owner, owner has owned the building for a long while, by the way, it was something that we were able to do. So this is the kind of vision, and I'll take you through a little bit more of this. So the site is here. It's one of the five-corner sites in Jersey City. We don't have many of them, as you know. And the primary blocks are Montrose and Manhattan, and you can see Manhattan kind of cutting on the diagonal here. That goes right down to Tunnelley Avenue, to the Boulevard on the other side. We are squarely in the R1, and so this building is a previously non-conforming use in that it was already multifamily, and it already had a commercial, at least one commercial space in it. We're not sure if it was one or two. We're proposing two, and we're proposing the five units. I think there were three units in here originally, so we are obviously proposing a little bit more. And then this is that sort of existing condition axon, which I just had to kind of render from this view. So you do see that there are some taller structures down Manhattan, right? And you do see that we have that beautiful wedge building at the five-corner, at the corners, like sort of to the left of us. But this really shows, in my mind, the diversity of kind of building types that you still have in the Heights today, right? And so that this building can kind of capture some of that, be a multifamily, have a commercial kind of element, two commercial elements to it, on a very prominent corner, we think is actually quite exciting. We spent a tremendous amount of time in this building, really trying to figure it out. And so you can see some of the, some of the, some more of the photos. Inside is not in very good shape, I mentioned that, so it is going to respond well to the love hopefully we were about to give it. There is a determination of significance, and it was dated June, I think, 28th, that says, 2021, written by, it wasn't by Maggie, it was actually by a third party, I think, if I remember correctly. But says exactly what we thought, that there was some significance to the building. It obviously shouldn't be demolished. We never thought we would demolish it. We cross-checked that with tax records that we were able to find, and that's when we know that it was originally used as at least a three-family, always had at least one commercial. And then you can see here the relief that we're seeking. There's a minimum front yard setback, that's a pre-existing condition to remain, but we're listing that as a yes variance. There's a minimum rear yard setback, that's an existing condition to remain, still listing it as yes. There's the max building height, which would be three stories and 35 feet. Now, we are proposing four stories and 41 feet, and that's the additional shortened story that I talked about, and that, you know, I think in some ways justifies economically the kind of upkeep that we're bringing to the building. Lot coverage is also an existing condition to be maintained, but we are noticing for it, as well as the density. And as I said before, I believe that there were three dwelling units, and at least one commercial, maybe two commercial. Now we are proposing five dwelling units and the two commercial. So here's just some building metrics that I can read into the record. It's a 2,500-square-foot lot, typical R1 lot. We're proposing the total building of 8275 square feet. It will be a mixed-use building with both residential and mercantile retail uses. It's zoned in the R1. The building height is four stories, I think that's 41 feet, but thereabouts, you know, it's four stories and 41 feet. Five residential units, three ones, one-two, and one-three, so a nice integrated mix of units, which we think is important. We are proposing an elevator. That elevator hopefully justifies the fourth floor. It will be a complete ADA building, so that will be some of the adaptive reuse that we provide to it. The first floor contains the two retail spaces that are split with one entry, I'll show you the plans in a second, on Montrose, the other entry from Manhattan. The residential lobby is between them. We do have a small sub-level, there is an existing basement, we'll use that for utility and storage, bike storage for nine bikes, and there's also a 560-square-foot roof deck. So this is our proposed site plan. You can see the retail one and the retail two. Retail two is the retail that was added after the second community meeting we had, and you see the points of entry and egress on that site plan. Lighting, we do have a series of recessed LEDs and wall sconces that are along the facade. And then the bike storage path, you go right out to Manhattan, which I think will be, well, the bikes are in the basement, actually, but they come right up the elevator and can go right out Manhattan. And then in terms of the cellar comparison, you see that we're largely using the cellar for building infrastructure spaces. You can see the electrical and mechanical room and so forth down there. The ground floor, this is the comparison of what is existing, and that existing is as close as we can measure. It was difficult to get all of that, but what's proposed, we think works quite well, while doing the restoration I mentioned of the facade. The second floor plan contains the three-bedroom unit and a private roof deck, and you see that that's where that little garage unit that we're making the retail, we could basically program that roof on top of it, and so that will be a private roof deck for what is the largest unit in the building, which is that three-bedroom on floor two. And then the third floor has a two-bedroom and a one-bedroom. I should say, you can see there's two stairs, we're doing a scissor-type stair, which is permitted by code, as well as that elevator. And you could see that the third floor, we're really expanding from that existing to the proposed, we're more than doubling it on the third floor. And then the fourth floor, which is new, we have two one-bedrooms, front and back. And the front one-bedroom has its own little private roof deck, because we're setting it back, and you'll remember that from that axonometric we showed. And then 566-square-foot roof deck that is surrounded by about 500 square feet of green roof is on the roof of the building. Now, existing elevations, we've gone through and really kind of documented these, based on the photo evidence we've shown you. And then what we're proposing, you can see, is down below. We think that we're really giving the building some new life while being very respectful of its history. You can see that on the Montrose Avenue elevation, the front, the existing and the proposed. And interestingly, by the way, it's white window frames, and I think that those are original. I think they were wood windows that were painted, but we're maintaining that, with the exception of the kind of frame that we're using to sort of align on the left with the door that you see. Manhattan Avenue elevation, you see that we are trying to refresh the storefront all the way along Manhattan on the lower floor, and then the front of the building is the kind of yellow stucco and brick ornament that wraps it, the framing. We will then have brick masonry here, and then this is a cementitious fiber panel up And then you see the proposed, the proposed front and back elevations here. South elevation, nothing going on, there's just another building touching it. Fairly complex building section with all the setbacks. I thought we would show that, just to show how we're managing all the different levels, as well as a kind of shortcut. And then the enlarged details, and I won't go so much into these, but I will say that there was a tremendous amount of time that we spent with Maggie. We enjoy doing this in terms of, I mentioned that tin facade, the tin storefront, that would be repainted, where we can reuse it or replace and paint it in kind. So you see some of the detailing that was submitted to the HPO. And then we have a shadow study. You know, fortunately, we're not casting any more shadow than the majority of buildings around us. You do see the big, the two big H buildings, those are the multifamilies that are a little bit further west down Manhattan. Those are doing the majority of the deep shadow casting in December. Our building is certainly casting a little bit more shadow than it did, but it's really casting into the intersection of the five streets, as opposed to on someone's yard, because it's on a corner, which is nice. And then I'll end with that axonometric drawing that I showed again, that, you know, there's a lot of moving parts to this one, I think, but I hope you'll find that we've kind of managed the good bones of the building and are giving it new life. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Do you have another presenter?
Okay.
I always enjoy his. No, I enjoy his presentation.
It's beautiful.
Yes, great.
It's freezing.
Yeah, I know.
It's all chilling.
Yes, I do. Sorry. Sorry about that. Full name, Catherine Gregory, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N, Gregory, G-R-E-G-O-R-Y. Business address is 96 Limone Plaza, number 350 in Fort Lee, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Ms. Gregory has been before us many times, and we recognize her expertise.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Gregory, would you take us through your testimony concerning justification for the variances that we need?
Absolutely. Mr. Garber did a great job explaining the project, which always makes my job really easy. We are here tonight seeking essentially two new variances for this application. We do have a number of existing conditions that are variances, which Mr. Garber did identify with you, but I'm going to first talk about the ones that are the new variances. The first of which would be the density variance, or the D5 variance. We are proposing 87 dwelling units an acre, where 42 dwelling units an acre is proposed. However, I did a density analysis, and then your planner, on page three of his report, did a more extensive density analysis of the neighborhood. If you remember seeing the aerial photograph that Mr. Garber had up before, there really are a variety of building types, from one to five stories. We have those two H buildings that he talked about, that are quite high in density, up to 203 dwelling units an acre. But this area that your planner identified, the average density is 92 dwelling units an acre. So we are right in comport with that. We're at 87, so we're actually slightly less. So I do believe that the density is warranted on the site just as well. There are transit options in the area. We have the 82, 83, and 87 New Jersey transit routes on Summit Avenue, one block to the east. We also have the number two, 88 and 125 on JFK Boulevard. So I believe that the density is warranted in this location. We also need a C or bulk variance for the number of stories. I would say this is a C2 variance, where the purpose of zoning, excuse me, are advanced, and the benefits outweigh the detriments. Three stories is permitted, four stories is proposed. A couple of things, I've already talked about the fact that we have these much larger buildings. There are five-story buildings that are located in the direct vicinity of this location. But I think it's also good to note that our fourth story, while that being a variance, is actually set back from the facade of the building, so it is less imposing than if it were to go to the actual property line. And then I'll relate that into the existing conditions, where we do have a deficient front yard setback, side yard setback, and rear yard setback, because we essentially have zero on all locations, but that's an existing condition. And since this is a historic building, and we're building on top of that, we're not changing that footprint. And that also goes to the existing condition of maximum lot coverage. We have 100% lot coverage, because we have no setbacks. So in terms of the criteria, I think that we do meet a few of the purposes of the municipal land use law, which fall under the positive criteria. I absolutely think we promote Purpose A, which talks about promotion of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. I believe that this project is going to benefit the community by refurbishing this existing historic building and building on top of that, as well as provide some high-quality housing, which talks, is talked about actually in your master plan. I also believe that we are promoting Purpose I, which talks about providing a desirable visual environment. I think Mr. Garber always does a really great job with his projects. I think that the design really helps to kind of fit in with the neighborhood, as well as bring out the historic character of the existing building. In terms of the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial detriment to the public good. A number of the variances obviously are existing. The other variances that we're asking for are found throughout the neighborhood, in this particular neighborhood, not another area in the R1 zone, but this particular area of the R1 zone. I also believe there's no substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of your zone planning zoning ordinance. I believe that we meet the purpose of the zone. The purpose of the R1 district is to accommodate existing housing, encourage compatible infill, preserve the streetscape, and utilize and preserve on-street parking where lot frontage is narrow. I believe that we are doing that here. We are preserving the streetscape. We are providing compatible, excuse me, infill. And we are revitalizing the housing that was located on the site and providing some additional new housing as well. I also believe that we promote two of the land use principles of the Jersey City Master Plan, which is, number one, continue efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods, I think we're doing that here, particularly at a corner location. And also, number two, ensure the city's housing supply is balanced and meets the needs of all current and future city residents. So with that said, simply put, I think that we meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the granting of the variances associated with this application.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have no further witnesses. I'd like, I'd like to really compliment Mr. Garber on this building. I know he's been working on this for a few years, and it really came out absolutely spectacular, reusing a building like this.
It is, it's beautiful.
We really enjoyed everything.
No, it is. It's very nice. Beautiful.
But that's, that's our case.
Okay.
I'm not for the witnesses.
Do we have any members of the public that would like to speak? Please.
Excuse my hat, it's so cold. I'm trying to get it warm.
I know.
Yes, I do. Patrick Finucane, I live at 194 Manhattan, 193 Manhattan Avenue, Jersey City. My main concern is that there should be an environmental impact study on this property. First of all, I've lived on this block for over 70 years. When I grew up, the corner was a candy store. Next to the candy store, we had a barber shop. Next to the barber shop, there was a liquor store, and next to the liquor store, we had Residentially speaking, I only know of one family that ever lived there. It was never a three-family, and I don't think it's on the zoning book as a two even. It's a one-family. Now we're proposing add five. The issue about the environmental impact study, in August of 2021, we had the hurricane item. I live in a row of seven houses on the block. We were flooded. First time in over seventy years, we've never... This was not, we're in the heights now. Water runs off the hill. Nobody has flood insurance on Manhattan Avenue, on the top hill. We didn't get rainwater in our homes. We got sewage. It was all backed up. The block can't handle additional units. I had an absentee owner on the block. He snuck in a basement apartment. I contacted Tanya's office. It was removed. You can't add additional units if the sewer system can't handle a volume. My main complaint is, could they reduce the number of units? There were never three families living in this property. It's probably the largest commercial strip north of Newark Avenue, excluding Central Avenue, on the side streets. There's a hundred feet of commercial property. I mean, some of that you're going to be using for a lobby, so that's going to be good. Yeah.
One minute to go.
I'm sorry?
One minute to go.
Thank you. And there's probably, it's twenty-five by a hundred, so they're using a hundred percent of this. And on Montrose, there's probably twenty feet, so you have a hundred and twenty feet of commercial property. My main complaint is the number of units. Could you reduce it down to three or two? It was never three residential units. And the parking issue, if you look at the streets, Beach Street, Carlton, Sherman Place, Hutton, Sabriskey, Lake Street, there's over a hundred illegal curb cuts. In Jersey City, tenants outnumber residential by two to one. It's seventy percent tenant, thirty percent residential. And how they're solving the parking problem, they're cutting the curb and putting their cars on the sidewalk. Take a look, take a ride down. On Sherman Place, five contiguous houses cut the curb.
Time's up.
There's ten cars on the sidewalk.
Time's up.
Please reduce the number of units. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Anyone else?
I live on fifty-eight Sanford Place. I'm here tonight because I have a direct sight, line sight, from my house, the side of the house and the front of the house, especially on the second floor. I see that, I can see the building. So if you're going to build to the fourth story and above, what I'm afraid is the lights. Down by Kennedy and Sanford Place, they built over four-story high. Nothing. On one of my other windows, I get the light all night long, winter and summer and spring. In the winter, I get it the worst because the trees don't block the light. They have it on twenty-four hours. So that's why I came, because I'm worried if it's four-story and above, I'm even worried about third story, but that's legal. But four-story with the waiver, I'm very concerned that for twenty-four hours, I'm going to have some kind of light going on, the side of my house and the front of my house.
Okay.
I have a direct sight. So that is my main concern about having five stories. And then what he said is correct. The parking is horrendous. Five units, three bedrooms, two bedrooms. I mean, they're parking all over on the sidewalks. We can't walk. And I lived there for forty years in fifty-eight Sanford Place. I can't be sure, but I think it was always one family living up there. I can't be for sure because, you know, I was working, so I didn't have time to look around. But now that I'm retired, I know this more than...
You look around.
Look around. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Lee, L-E-E, last name. The only... Your address is? Fifty-eight Sanford Place. The only concern I have is the waiver that you have listed. When you sent us the listing saying that any additional renovation does not need to go through the council or anything. And I'm just worried if they, if we approve, if you approve it now, so any waiver, listen, they want to put another ten stories on, they'll be able to do it because they don't need council approval.
No, that doesn't mean that, sir.
Or that's what you say.
That doesn't mean that.
I live in Jersey long enough not to believe anything the council says.
You can believe me, that doesn't mean that.
But I'm just worried about that wavering. I mean, we like your plan. We don't disagree with the plan, but we're worried about the density because it's so hard for parking in our area.
I know. I know.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Anyone else?
I think Mr. Garber would like to respond to a couple...
Yes, please.
So I can do my best. So in short, you know, it is very difficult to discern how many units were in here, and I take at face the, you know, the folks that have been around for a while. But being in this old building and trying to discern where walls were, whether it was legal or not is a whole other question, but the way that it's cut up now, there were definitely more, I think, I believe there were three families in there. So that's where my assessment comes from, not from a tax record. The other thing is, the other thing is, with the SOARs, the MUA is actively looking at this citywide. On all of our projects, there's always some sort of discussion that we're having about this. I understand that this is larger than what was there. I'm also not an engineer, but I can say with some confidence that, you know, five units is not going to overburden a SOAR system on Manhattan, where I know for a fact that there's a larger kind of SOAR that goes down the hill to Tonally and beyond. So hopefully, that's the case. With the lights, we do hear complaints like that or objections like that from time to time. One of the things that you'll see is we don't have a lot of windows on that upper story because we are cognizant of that. Now, we obviously have, windows are required by code for light and air and for egress in some instances, and so obviously, we're doing that. We're also trying to align some of the glazing sensibility with what's below. And I will say that increasingly, we do try, try, to impress upon our clients to have commonality in the window treatment and the shading that happens so that the building is consistent and you're not seeing all sorts of different things through the windows on a kind of handsomer manicured building. That's not something that we can totally control as the architect, but I am satisfied to do it, and we certainly can talk with the owner about that. I would say, I've spent a lot of time with the owner now because we've been spending a lot of time, Hua Ji from our office has been in this building, he practically lives here. So I think that the owner has very good intentions in doing this and wants to do something, wants to give the commercial spaces back to the community and be a good neighbor.
Okay. Can I have comments from the board? Questions? Oh.
I have nothing further, so I'll turn it over to the board.
Okay, thank you. Do I have any questions, comments from the board? No? Can I have comments from the staff?
Yes, let me share my screen so you can see my report. I will be very brief. I just want to first talk about two points. So as we all know, the subject site is in R-one. R-one now permits for residential uses up to, sorry, for residential uses. Also, it permits three stories, thirty-five feet, as well as something which is unique, and I applaud the applicant for taking advantage of this. The first floor commercial provided that the commercial units existed in the nineteen thirties tax assessor's photo is something that was added to the R-one, and the applicant has taken advantage of that as this property previously was a mixed use. I don't want to take up too much time. I do just want to show the board that this is the neighborhood density map. You can see in red, these are lots that are fifty-three units per acre, whereas the R-one now allows for forty-two units an acre. So there's quite a lot of dense housing apartments in the neighborhood. Do you want to quickly go here? So it is the opinion of the staff that the proposal advances the following purposes, so Purpose B, to secure safety from flood. So the applicant is providing five new street trees where none exist on the block today. In addition, the applicant is installing green roof that covers roughly seven hundred and forty-five feet. This is combined on the rooftop as well as the roof deck on the top of the first floor. It also promotes Purpose E, which is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities. Staff feels that the proposed mixed use is appropriate for the lot and the proposed bulk associated with the multifamily use. As far as the negative criteria, the existing non-conformalities help validate that this use is not out of character for the neighborhood. The proposal will restore commercial activity that once existed on Manhattan and Montrose in the thirties, and it also supports the commercial corridor, which is on Central Ave, JFK, and Summit. In terms of the C variance in height, the project requires the C variance because it is asking for four stories and forty-one feet in height, where the zone now only allows for three stories and thirty-five feet. However, staff believes that the proposal furthers the city master plan by enhancing residential neighborhoods and ensuring the city's available housing is balanced. Oh, okay. All right, well, that's done. Time to switch to paper. Ultimately, I did want to show you guys the tax card, but I did some research, and the tax card showed that the property in the nineteen thirty-eight, or nineteen thirty-eight, contained six stores on the ground floor as well as two apartments. And that's just a little research I did, but other than that, staff does recommend approval with conditions outlined in my staff report. And I just want to put on the record, you agree to the conditions that Maggie sent from HPC.
Yes, as well as the conditions in the planning memo dated July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's it. Thank you, Francisco. So can I have a motion from the board?
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve KZ twenty-two dash zero six nine as approved, excuse me, as presented to the board this evening with conditions.
May I have a second?
Okay. On a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Zablaki?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadine?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Nice design, yes.
And Vice Chair, do you?
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck.
Okay. So, it's beautiful. Okay, so the next case is Z two zero two four zero zero one six, eight Highland Avenue and eight nineteen Bergen Avenue. Applicant is George Gregory, and the attorney is Elmo Cod, Caud?
Mr. Caud is from my office. I'm handling the file tonight.
You're busy today. You're busy.
I know you're tired of seeing me.
No, it's okay. You're good. You're good.
It's Ron's night. There we go.
Go ahead.
Mr. Schallergin, again, this is a notice case. We have your notices, your affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication. So iris will mark this as A-one for this application.
There's the last one.
Thank you, Mr. Mafai. This is an, this is an application that combines two lots, one on Highland Avenue and one on Bergen Avenue. Lot on Bergen Avenue used to be the Joseph Cooney Insurance Agency, which had been there for, I bet, fifty or sixty years. It's no longer in operation. The one-story Cape House on Highland is a one-family house. It is in serious disrepair. The applicant intends to combine the lots, if approved, and construct a new building on both of the lots. This application as well has had meetings with the community associations. Mr. Garber has handled those meetings. I'll let him tell you about it. But it's an exciting application because it's lending the Bergen Square area to a lot more development than it has experienced in a very long time. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Garber.
Thank you. Sophia, can you project, please, or reference, I'm sorry? So this is another project that has been in our office for several years, and I'm happy we're actually here tonight with all of them. So we, it's on the other screen now, but, so it's okay. So as Mr. Schallergin said, this is a condition where there are two buildings that are adjacent and partially connected that exist not on the corner, but around the corner of Highland and Bergen. And what's interesting about this, I was thinking about this, is, you know, our office has been involved in, you know, numerous projects on the Bergen corridor, and we actually did a project just like this on a little bit of a bigger site, but same kind of configuration, where we had frontage on Bergen and frontage, in that case, on Fairmont, and that's the building that exists there now that's called the Fairmont at seven twenty Bergen. This is much smaller than that, where the unit count is much lower. But what the lot does is it, it really is exciting in some ways because it gives us an opportunity to merge between two very different scales and types of building aesthetic. And I would say that both are vernacular, but the vernacular on Bergen is quite different than the vernacular on Highland. Highland is a much more residential block, and you'll see that our elevations on that block and the setbacks are very much in keeping with the pattern of development that has happened there. And on Bergen, we are much more kind of on the street, creating a street wall in brick masonry and consistent with the buildings that we have there. And you can see that we're right adjacent to a very large multifamily that you'll see in some photos. We have had, and so the zoning map is here, these are both in the R-one, and we are one site away from the old CBD that still exists right at the sort of south edge of Journal Square, but this is R-one, not historic, but R-one nonetheless. We had two meetings, they were almost a year apart, at the old Bergen Church that was organized by the pastor there, and they were both attended equally well by more or less the same folks, which was great. And so admittedly, that first meeting that we had, which was two summers ago at this point, so two years ago basically, you know, we hadn't really kind of worked through the elevations yet. We were kind of showing some concepts, and we were showing some density and some setbacks that I think were deemed a little aggressive. And so we listened and we, you know, we cut that back, right? And so we now, I think, have something that's a little bit more, as I said, you know, works well with the kind of pattern of development on both of these blocks, which is kind of quite different. This is the existing little house that looks totally out of place on Bergen, and this is the little house that, in my opinion, looks out of place on Highland, right? Because it's very small, which is kind of interesting. Now, it's the same owner. He lives kind of in both of these buildings. There is some, I don't exactly know what it is, but there is some way to get between them. He primarily lives in the smaller structure here. And largely, the houses that are on the corner, so basically east of the little house that you see here, are medical uses. And it was interesting because there was a time, and this came out in one of the community meetings, where we were seeking a potential medical use here, and one of the community members actually said to me, well, why would you bring a medical use here? There are no... There are no medical uses here. And I walked right outside and there were medical uses right on the corner. So, you know, there, there are some, you know, there are some things that I think are clues in the existing fabric. So, so what, what I'm going to present to you is a building that kind of is an L, that is basically three stories on Highland, that does provide for six parking spaces, and then a five-story configuration on Bergen that I think is in keeping with the brick masonry taller buildings that are on Bergen. And we're trying to do it in a way that we kind of weave them together into a single structure, which, you know, is, has its challenges, but I, I think we have something that, that, that sort of works. So this is the, the building frontage on Highland. This has been a redesigned facade after receiving some feedback from the community about setback, about materials. And you can even see from this rendering, we now have a setback that is, you know, plus or minus ten feet. I'll give it to you when I show you the site plan, that keeps with the line of buildings that are on Highland. So we are, from a, from a precedent point of view, aligned with the faces on Highland. Now, the frontage is actually wider than many of the houses. So what did we do? We split it in two, right? So instead of making one massive structure, we did two structures that actually have a pitched roof condition to them. And the pitched roof is vernacular to the block. It, it aligns with the sensibilities that you'll see on the block. I have a block elevation while still meeting the setbacks and, you know, hopefully giving a little bit of a more contemporary flair with some of the larger windows. Now, there is some relief needed here. We have a front yard setback which shall match the adjacent building. And what we have here is Highland is at seven-two and we do more or less match that. Bergen Ave is zero. I should say Highland is seven-two to sixteen-eleven. And that's because our little building is, is very deep in terms of it, it's setback from the street. And Bergen is zero. So we're matching zero on Bergen and, and you'll see in the site plan how we're trying to mitigate the conditions that we see on the block by basically stepping in between the, the structures on either side of us. The building height on the Bergen side is five stories and fifty-three feet. I think that's consistent with what's on the block. However, that is a deviation as three stories and thirty-five feet is permitted in the R1. The image that I just showed you on the Highland side, we do comply. We're at thirty-five feet to the, the, the middle of the pitched roof, which is how we're supposed to measure it. And then the maximum permitted density, we are proposing nine units here and that gives us seventy-two units per acre. Ms. Gregory is here. She will testify again to the sort of logics behind that. So there are, again, some deviations here, but I would say that it's also a kind of oddly configured lot that we're trying to kind of merge some sensibilities on. So proposed design key points, the lot area is just under fifty-five hundred square feet, fifty-four sixty-three. The total building area, and that's three stories on one side, five stories on the other, totals sixteen thousand two hundred sixty-six square feet. The Bergen Ave side is five stories and fifty-three feet, six inches, which I think is contextual. And then the Highland side is three stories and thirty-five feet to the midpoint of that pitched roof, which I also think is contextual. We are proposing nine residential units, that's four one-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms, and three two-bedroom duplex units. I'll show you how those work in the plans. Again, elevator is proposed, so there is accessibility coming to both of these, both of these parts of the building, where there wasn't any accessibility in the existing condition. The first floor has six indoor parking spaces. We do have a, a parking, a, a, a transportation engineer here who can speak to that a little bit. Six parking spaces, trash room, residential lobby, and a modest retail, eight seventy-seven square feet on Bergen. So this is another mixed-use building, given its sitting. The six parking spaces are accessed from Highland and we do have bike storage for eighteen bikes, which is, I think, more than we need to. So here you see the site plan and you can see some of the setback logics. And, and so basically, I'm going to try to use the mouse. Let's hope I can get it up there, yeah. So what you see here is, this is the, the building that has the medical offices in it. You can see the way its bay windows are proud. And then you can see the rest of the housing stock on Highland sets back a little bit further. So what we did, and this was also in consultation with the pastor and the community at the meetings, is we decided to try to average between them, right? So we actually stepped back further than the corner, but a little bit more proud than the houses down the block. So we're setting up a kind of line of sight that is almost like a perspective line of sight, right? We have an eleven-foot-six front yard setback that we're holding from the sight line. Our rear yards are quite generous, where we have a thirty-five-foot rear yard that we're showing, again with my mouse, from the Bergen projection, from the Bergen side, and then a twenty-four-yard foot rear yard setback from the Highland side. And you can see that's more or less consistent with the building that's adjacent to us, right? There is sight lighting. We're using actually the same sconces that I showed you before that are, they, they project both up and down, but not out, so they're really nice. And then we have some outdoor recessed downlights as well, and those are the blue sort of circles. Bike and trash removal, you can see how those work. And this is all out to Highland, which is where the garage access is, so we thought that that made sense. And there is a proposed basement plan, so we do have our bike storage in the basement. Eighteen spaces are proposed, and so that means that the bikes will go up the elevator and, and out the parking area, which we think is, is fine. There are also building infrastructure spaces down here, mechanical room, plumbing room, sprinkler room, and so forth, which we like doing if we can, because you can actually tie in directly at that kind of MUA sub, sub-street level. Our first floor plan, and there's a lot here, so I'll use the mouse again and try to take you from Highland. So we have a curb cut to go into the driveway. So we have an eleven-foot-six inch driveway. There will be no cars parked in that driveway, by the way. It's only for access. The rest of that setback is all landscaped, with the exception of a paved entry to, to the garage, like a, a sort of person entry as opposed to the garage entry. We have the six parking spaces that you see here. So we have the ADA space. We have a standard space two, standard space three, standard space four, and then standard spaces five and six. There will be EV charging here. I don't think we're showing it yet in our plans, but that is required in multifamilies and something that we will do. You do see here the setback that we have in the rear corner, twenty-four-foot setback in the rear yard from Highland and a thirty-five-foot setback in the rear yard from Bergen. That is pay, there's some pavement back there for the two parking spaces, but the majority of it, as you can see, is landscaped, right? We do have some civil plans and we were asked to actually try to determine, as part of this, a dimension between existing trees center to center, and by our calculation, it's forty-six feet. So Sophia, we can talk about that one as we, as we go on, but I just wanted to show that plan. We are proposing here a potential location for the street tree that, so let me, let me step back a second. There was a comment that staff would like the street tree to be more centered between the existing trees. So we went out and we took a dimension. We found that the dimension between the, the existing trees is forty-six feet. So if we were to evenly distribute, that street tree would be relocated a little bit further to the corner. We're happy to do that. So that is some new evidence that actually just came up at about three o'clock this afternoon. So hopefully the board doesn't mind that we're, we're showing it as part of our, our drawings here. Other than that, this is all stuff that was submitted, as you know. So on the second floor, this is when the residential units start. And you do see that in blue, we have this kind of wedge-shaped hallway. This isn't the most efficient building we've ever designed, but at the same time, we're, we're trying to make use of the, the site. So that hallway connects two stairs, which you see in orange, as well as the elevator, which is the kind of more square shape in orange. And you can see that we have a one-bedroom, two one-bedrooms in the front on Highland, that's right here. A two-bedroom here, and then a two-bedroom back here on Bergen. I failed to mention before, I should just go back, that we do have, I'm going the wrong way, the retail space on Bergen, which is eight hundred and seventy-seven square feet. I forgot to talk about that before. That's right here. And then the, the, the units carry up. And so this carries, so the third floor more or less matches the second floor. There's a little bit, and you can even see the way that we're articulating that stepped setback is even happening here. So the sort of right side of the building is slightly more proud than the left side of the building. So we're actually stepping the building back to two dimensions, which is important to kind of establish, again, that rhythm that we, we found on the street. And then the fourth floor plan, this is when we're out above the portion of the building on Highland and we're now only on Bergen. And you see that we have the two two-bedroom duplexes that exist here on the fourth floor and go up to the fifth floor. So you see that here, and then you see the top floor, the fifth floor, which is the, the upper floor of the two-bedroom duplexes where we actually have the bedrooms. So what you're seeing here is four bedrooms split between two duplexes. And we are opting to do solar panels. I think this is the first client we've ever, actually the second client that we've ever talked into this. But the, the new sustainable regulations do allow for solar panels instead of green roof. I'm, I'm happy to show that we're, we're actually contemplating that here. There will be a third party that we will ultimately consult in terms of what the array is, but the intention is to put them, as shown, on the Bergen Ave side. The Bergen Avenue elevation is fairly simple. It's a, a kind of dark base with the brick four stories, and we do show plant boxes here, and then black frames around the windows, just a, a metal frame around the windows. Fairly narrow elevation, but you do see, we do have a fair amount of glazing on that ground floor because this will be a retail unit. And again, the plant boxes, which we think just, so long as they can be maintained, will be a nice aspect. And then the Highland Avenue elevation, this is the rendering that you saw before. What we've done is we've kind of subdivided that face into two elevations. The one on the right is slightly proud to the one on the left, but they do match. We get nice big windows as well as the pitched roof, so we do think that contextually this works. And then you see the, the side elevations where this is actually the side where there's a house immediately next to us. But you do see the rear of the portion of the building on Bergen. And then here is the, the side elevation. There's a larger building next to us on Bergen and you see the rear of the portion of the building on Highland. So you see the way we're terminating that pitched roof in the upper right. Just some enlarged details that we've done to show that we're compliant with signage. We're just showing the building address and generic retail. There'll obviously be some name to this for the retail, but we, it will be compliant signage. This is also a fairly complicated building section, so we are showing the building section here. We do think we can maintain floor-to-ceiling heights of nine feet six inches, which is, we think is really nice. This is on the Highland side. And then the Bergen side, we're maintaining same. And you can see, we do have a, a slight cantilever where we're setting in that retail face so we can pull the building out, which will provide, no need for a canopy. We'll, we'll be providing the shade that way. And then finally, block elevations. I think these really do, in my mind, convincingly show how the project does successfully mitigate between two different vernaculars. You see the building on Bergen on the, on the upper left, and then our building on Highland, Highland on the lower right. Highland, by the way, does have some multifamily on it, and you can see that sort of on the lower left. But there really is no consistent building design on Highland, right? You have some fairly steep pitched roofs, you have some fairly flat pitched roofs, you have some bay windows that carry all the way up. So it's eclectic, I think. And I think that what we've done, hopefully mitigates with that while bringing something new that, that does fit in. And that's the goal here. And I'll end with that. Oh, I have some shadow studies. There's that rendering again. The shadow studies, I don't think I have an animation here. I do have an animation. You can see our building, our building is here on the corner. And there are larger buildings further south that are casting a lot more shadow than our building is casting because of its location on the north-west corner of Bergen and Highland. We're actually mostly casting shadows into the street during the, you know, the darker months of the year. So we don't believe that there'll be any, any impact beyond what is already there. And that's what hopefully these, these animations show. And I'll just finish with that rendering again. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you have another presentation?
I have a planner.
Okay.
And I have available the, our traffic engineer, if it's necessary. If you have any questions.
I think we're fine.
I'll hold it for last, but I'd like to hold a planner.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Gregory, you heard Mr. Garber's presentation, the evidence that he's presented to the board. Would you please go through your planning testimony to justify the variance?
Yes. For this application, we are seeking a D1 use variance as the mixed-use building is not a permitted use in the R1 zone. This is also in the R1 zone, like the last application. Regarding a use variance, we have to prove that the site is particularly suited and we have to distinguish it from other properties in the immediate area. I think we can absolutely do that here as this is a very unique property. It is L-shaped. It's around a corner lot. So it's definitely a unique property and it is distinguishable from those in the immediate area. So not only do we have to prove that the site is particularly suited, but we also have to prove the positive criteria in terms of the promotion of the purposes of the municipal land use law and also the negative criteria. Now, I do believe that the site is particularly suited because of its L shape. I believe that in terms of this application, each street frontage contains that different vernacular that Mr. Garber talked about and it is addressed through the proposed design. Not only do we have also a number of mixed-use buildings, and the reason I wanted Mr. Garber to keep this up on the screen is when you take a look at the existing streetscape along Bergen, you can see that we do have a number of mixed uses there and a very strong commercial corridor to the north of our, of our proposed project. So I do believe that the mixed-use building is warranted in this location, particularly for the fact that it is closer to the other corner, where often you do find mixed-use buildings. And, you know, sorry to refer to our last application at fifty-nine Montrose, but obviously you could see that corner building, it served its purpose as mixed use because there was commercial on the first floor and residential above. And the fact that we're so close to the corner, I think that we're reflecting kind of that same condition. The next variance that we need, we also need a density variance for this particular application. Again, in the R1 zone, forty-two dwelling units is permitted per acre. We are proposing seventy-two. When you take a look at the density analysis that is contained in your planner's report, you will find that the majority of the densities are over two-hundred. In fact, one is four hundred and ninety-one units per acre on Bergen Avenue, A twenty-nine Bergen Avenue. The average of all of these is actually two hundred and thirty-eight. So we're well below that. We are not asking for some kind of crazy density. And Mr. Garber did indicate that we met with the community and we were proposing a larger building, but we've scaled that down. So we do believe that we fit within the area and we think the density is also warranted. This is a ten-minute walk from Journal Square and right on Bergen are New Jersey Transit routes eight, eighty, and eighty-seven. So there is a public transit in the area that's available. We also need a D-six height variance as thirty-five feet is permitted in the R1 zone and we are proposing fifty-three feet along Bergen Avenue. Again, I feel that this is warranted and I think Mr. Garber explained it really well. And again, if you just take a look at the streetscape, the building next to us is really, really tall. So, and what was there to, well, what exists today really does not look right along the streetscape because most of the buildings are much taller and the building that's there today is also very much setback. So we're improving that condition. We're pulling it up and we're really trying to reflect that streetscape. So I think that on the Bergen side, that height is warranted. Obviously, on the other side, we've taken, you know, deliberity of trying to fit in with the neighborhood as he discussed. We're really, we're only three stories on that side and we meet the height requirement. We also do need a couple of C-year bulk variances. He did talk about, Mr. Garber talked about the front yard setback, that we're supposed to match the, you know, the existing buildings on either side. However, on Highland, if we were to actually go to the letter of the law, we'd have a building that was on an angle, because obviously the properties on either side of us have differing setbacks. And so Mr. Garber, in his design, had a very creative solution by stepping back the building. So we're addressing it without having an actual angle in front of the building, so I think it meets the intent of what the front yard setback is supposed to be. We also need a C variance for building height in terms of the number of stories, and I would just repeat what I said before about the height along Bergen Avenue, because when you take a look at the streetscape, I think that this fits better in with the existing vernacular. In terms of special reasons, I think we promote a number of the purposes of the municipal land use law. The first would-be purpose A, again, promoting the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. We're essentially taking two buildings that really don't fit in with the vernacular on either block, eliminating those, and creating some new architecture that really does fit in to help create, or I'm sorry, to help, I want to say fix the streetscape, if you will, for these two properties. I also believe that we are promoting Purpose H, which talks about encouraging the location and design of transportation routes, which will promote the free flow of traffic while discouraging location of such facilities and routes that result in congestion or light. The reason I say that is, is when you take a look at what's there on Bergen now, there's, I think that, you know, the, one of the guys from before the residents talked about the legal curb cuts, there's a curb cut along the entire length of the property, and people are just parking all over the front of that property. So now what we're doing is we're eliminating the curb cut, we're going to bring back the street parking, and we're going to continue that, so we're going to have better pedestrian safety along Bergen, especially for the fact that we do have so much commercial that's located on Bergen. So it's absolutely a benefit to this application. I also believe that we are promoting Purpose I, again, desirable visual environment. Mr. Garber always does a really good job when he designs his projects to reflect the vernacular that's in the neighborhood. And going forward, I don't believe in terms of negative criteria that there's any substantial judgment to the public good by requesting these variances. I believe that there's going to be a significant upgrade, not only in aesthetics, but obviously you talked about the traffic safety. Also, I don't believe there's any substantial impairment to the intent purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Similar to the last application, I believe we meet the purpose of the R1 zone, which, oop, sorry, I hit something, which is, the purpose of this district is to accommodate existing housing, encourage compatible infill, I believe this is compatible infill, preserve the streetscape. Not only preserving it, I think we're enhancing the streetscape. So I believe that's what we're doing here. And in terms of a use variance, we're supposed to reconcile the omission of the use from the zone. So I understand that typically, you know, mixed-use buildings are not looked for in an R1 zone, because that's your lowest zone. However, given the location of this particular piece of the property, the fact that it's so unique in that L shape and addressing two sides, and the fact that while we might have a mixed-use building, but Highland really looks like it's two single-family homes. So I think this is a really creative solution to kind of an awkward lot that is absolutely going to strengthen the character of this neighborhood. So with that said, I think we meet both the positive and the negative criteria for the granting of the variances.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
At this time, I'd like to call the traffic consultant, because at one of the neighborhood meetings, they did request a traffic consultant, and I'd like to put his testimony on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Klein.
Please, we are all prepared to testify.
I do. Lee, middle initial D as in Daniel, Klein, K-L-E-I-N. I'm a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Yes, Mr. Klein, we recognize your expertise. You've been here many times.
Thank you, it's been a while since I've been here. I've been here, but not necessarily up here to testify. So I prepared a traffic report, traffic engineering evaluation report. Thank you. It is dated June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. We did the trip generation calculations for the nine units and the eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven square feet of retail space. We're looking at two vehicular trips in the morning peak hour for the nine units, and two vehicular trips for the retail in the morning peak hour, for a total of four trips in the evening peak hour, three trips for the residential units, and six trips for the retail. Because it's a small retail, it's going to be mostly pass-by trips, people walking along Bergen Avenue, stopping in at the shop. We also looked at the parking. Even though we don't require parking, we've proposing six parking spaces for nine units. We have a total of fourteen parking spaces. I look at the Institute of Transportation Engineers Parking Generation Sixth Edition, and in it, we look at mid-rise apartments within a half a mile of Mass Transit, a half mile of Journal Square, and we look at fourteen-bedroom units. We're expecting an average of six parked cars in the overnight hours, and the eighty-fifth percentile is nine cars. And as you heard Ms. Gregory say, we're taking away the driveway on Bergen Avenue, which is quite a wide driveway, and in my estimation, I think we'll be able to get at least two cars on-street. So we're adding two on-street parking spaces and providing six onsite parking spaces for a total of eight, and the eighty-fifth percentile peak parking demand is nine. So we're very close to that number, and we're above the average. We're proposing nine-foot-by-eighteen-foot parking spaces, twenty-two-foot-wide two-way drive aisles, and as you heard, our driveway and garage door opening is less than twelve feet wide, which will be adequate for such a low generator of traffic. If somebody's trying to come in, and somebody's trying to come out, the person coming out can wait inside while a car enters, and vice versa. So it's not going to be an issue with that. And yeah, so in my estimation, there won't be an impact to traffic or to parking in the neighborhood, based on what we're proposing here, nine units, six parking spaces, adding some parking to the street. The retail will be mostly, if not all, walking traffic along Bergen Avenue, and the vehicle trips will be very low during the peak hours.
I just have, there was one thing I did not notice. The entrance for the parking lot, is it from Highland?
Yes, on Highland, yes.
Okay, good. Because if you're going to go from Bergen, you're going to come back to Bergen, because it's one-way street.
Right, right, no, it's a entrance and exit on Highland, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further witnesses?
Okay. So can I have any comments, questions from the board?
I just have, I don't, it's not really a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The public, I forgot. Thank you.
Oh, okay.
John, excuse me, John Hanasek? Okay, got a lot to go over here, so I'm going to try to go through this quick. The last community meeting, there were adjustments discussed, but it would have been nice for another community meeting to review this as opposed to hearing it here. Also, the feedback on the project as a whole was mixed. There definitely was not overwhelming support for this project. As a homeowner, it's getting more and more frustrating how owners aren't required to demonstrate an inability to develop property under its current zoning. Instead, they shoot for the stars in hopes of having little to zero attendance at these meetings. In most cases, they succeed because of incredible amount of time it takes to oppose these variances. Now, in the request of variances, I oppose the variances because there's nothing preventing them from developing as a right. The neighborhood is already very incredibly congested, and adding more density is nothing but detrimental to the neighborhood. Even with the six parking spots being added to the project, it removes parking from the block, yes, it adds a spot on Bergen, but that spot will be a metered spot. It's not a general public spot. Now, from what I've been able to determine, with some, checking some legal sites, that the reasons for D variances, inherently beneficial to the public good, uniquely suited, and the public will benefit, will create a hardship if variance isn't granted. For a C variance, C variances are to address a hardship. There's no hardship in building as a right, except for possibly only on the setbacks. Also note that this is not one lot, this is two lots. It's been described as one L-shaped lot, it's two lots, so let's make sure that that's clear. I think I heard that the parking of the parking spots that's going to be in the project, there's retail parking, that is new, based on what was part of the meetings. And based on the circumstances above, I ask you to vote no on the variances, that this really should be built as a right. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we, excuse me, do we, let's finish with the public, and then you can answer their questions, please. Do we have another, any other speaker that would like to comment? Oh?
She fell asleep.
Okay. She fell asleep. Okay, you can comment.
Yeah, I would just say that we do a lot of these community boards. That gentleman was certainly at the community boards, and I remember having a nice conversation with him and talking about the project. There were, I don't have the count, Mr. Cowder, Ron's associate has a count and a number of people that attended, but I would guess there were somewhere between twenty and thirty people at every meeting, at both meetings. And as I testified before, they were largely the same crowd. It was largely the same faces that I interacted with at both of those meetings. And having done these, and sometimes having these go horribly bad, I felt very satisfied that there was general agreement in this project. If there wasn't, I would have absolutely called for a third meeting, but didn't think it was warranted because there was general agreement to what we proposed.
Okay, thank you.
And the only, excuse me, the only other comment that I would make is that the lots will be consolidated, and we did not want to do that unless this application was approved. And I think Mr. La Paglia will agree with that reason.
Yes, that logic.
Okay.
I have no, we have no further witnesses.
Thank you. Do I have comments from the board?
That was actually my question. I'm trying to visualize this, because I drive up Highland like every day, because you can't go up zip, because it's closed half the time. So you're two, you're going to be two, the third house down will be the new on Highland off the corner.
Correct. I can put it back up if you want to see.
And then around the back is where your other building is, onto Bergen?
Let me show, I can show you just to make sure. I put my thing away, one second.
I like this architect.
He's very nice.
I don't know, do I have the information? Because.
Okay, so hopefully that'll come back up. Francisco, can you put it back up? Great. So the site plan that I showed is.
You got it.
Is not a black hole. Is, you see it here. So there is a structure on the corner of Bergen, which is currently a medical use, and that's this building here.
Okay.
And that's the building I talked about with the articulated windows, the bay windows. Our building line starts here, and the curb cut to go into the parking is here, and the Bergen building is here. So there is, it's not a vacant lot, it's, I think, a rear yard, I believe it or not, of here, right on, which is almost ridiculous on such a major street, right? But there is a tree here that is on, I lost my mouse again, that is on Bergen. So the retail that we're proposing, eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven square feet is here. There is no way into our building for the residential units on Bergen. There's an egress out to Bergen, but that'll be a locked door, so you can only push it out. So the kind of residential entry, the residential access point, will be on Highland, which is the more residential block, so I thought that made sense.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. Any more questions? No? Can we have comments from the staff?
For the most part, I agree with the testimony that was presented today. I would like to add a couple of things. One is that Bergen Avenue is identified in the master plan as a neighborhood corridor, and that means that it's a major street within a neighborhood that has a mixed-use character and higher densities compared to neighboring streets. And I think that this project definitely does add to that intent of Bergen Ave being a neighborhood corridor. Not only that, but within its surroundings, it is surrounded by a couple of different zones, which have, in fact, no density requirements, and also allows for retail. And so not only in the, on the block of Bergen Avenue, where you can find retail and higher densities, but in the surrounding, there is also permitted retail and higher densities, which means that this project also, I believe, suits its surroundings. And the proposed density also meets the intent of the land use principles in the Jersey City Master Plan, and that is, one, to continue the efforts to enhance residential neighborhoods, and, two, to ensure the city's housing supply is balanced and meets the needs of all current and future city residents. So those points I wanted to add to this. Other than that, planning staff does recommend approval of this application.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, did you have another comment?
Oh, no, I don't.
Okay.
I just acknowledged receipt of the planning memo, and my client has agreed to the terms of the recommendations in the memo.
All right, thank you. So can I have a motion, please?
Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve KZ two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-zero-one-six I presented to the board this evening with conditions.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
On a motion to approve with conditions, Commissioner Zabliki?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Barron?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Arroyo?
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and good night.
Homie'd have hot tea.
We have just two resolutions to memorialize, and then we can have hot tea.
A belly's full.
Do you want me to adjourn the meeting first?
No, 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 we just did the resolution.
Okay, all right.
So ready, Iris? So the first resolution to memorialize is Z twenty-twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-two-four. It's the Grove Street Hub LLC. It was an approval of a one-year site plan extension. That was heard on June thirteenth of this year. Present on June thirteenth was Chairperson Coyle, Vice Chair Arroyo, Commissioner Zabliki, Shadid, Boyle, and Barron, and that passed, six in favor and none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
The next case, this was heard July eleventh. Present on July eleventh was, again, Chairperson Coyle, Vice Chair Arroyo, Commissioners Shadid, Allen, Burns, and Barron. And this case is Z twenty-twenty-four-dash-zero-zero-twenty-five. Nicholas Schultz and Amy, I can't begin to say the last name. It was another one-year extension. The address was two-fifty Barrow Street. That one-year extension was, again, approved, six in favor and none opposed. All in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
And that would end it as far as the resolutions are concerned, and I imagine that ends it as far as the meeting is concerned.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Did you have something else, Francisco? No, okay.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay.
Say, Rye?
Good night, everyone, thank you.